Elections are a time for educating and engaging people to make an informed decision on who will bring forth ideas, who will work to fix the problems, and who would be best to serve the district and its community. We appreciate that you are all here to join us today. Many of us have our ballots already, but the actual election day, March fifth, is only twenty-two days away. So this is a very timely gathering. So the first thing I'd like to do is to introduce the candidates for the council District Six seat. First, we have Councilmember Imelda Padilla.
Hello. Thank you all for being here, having me.
We have Carmen Lina Minasova.
Thank you. I'm here.
We have Richard Serrano.
Richard Serrano here to serve you.
Thank you. And we did invite Eli de la Cruz Ayao, but I don't believe he is able to be here today. So just a little bit of housekeeping before we begin. We're going to give each candidate two minutes for an opening statement, and then I will ask some prepared questions. And each candidate will have two minutes to answer the questions. But I don't want to be the only person asking questions, so we will be asking the audience to provide questions with the same parameters. To close, we will give each candidate two minutes. And if you are a member of the audience and you would like to have a specific question asked on your behalf, please send them via the chat. So for the first opening statement, I'd like to introduce Councilmember Imelda Padilla. The floor is yours.
Well, hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me and for hosting this debate. I think debates are very important. As was summarized by David Reschwin over here, it's important to engage and inform the community with ideas. You know, talking about how we fix the problems and how we're going to focus on things that the community elevates. So I think that's what we're going to be able to do here today. As many of you know, I won this election most recently in a special election, and now I am once again in reelection mode. But I like to think that in being there, I am definitely going through what I summarize as a learning curve of how City Hall operates, but not a learning curve in terms of what sort of things are important to this region as it pertains to what they want me to elevate at City Hall. And through that, we've been able to get a lot of things done in these first couple of months as it pertains to getting a contract to clean up the streets with the Northeast graffiti busters and also getting more funding in terms of outreach for the homeless with a partnership with Hope the Mission. And now that I have a better sense of how that sort of space and service model for homelessness works, asking some very difficult questions to to make better policy that is going to really address what everybody's talking about as it pertains to the homeless crisis and how it affects everything from quality of life as well as the business community. So again, thank you for having me, and I'm excited to be able to talk about what I've been up to and what I hope to continue to do if granted the opportunity by voters on March fifth.
Thank you, Councilmember. For an additional opening statement, we have Carmen Lina Minasova. Carmen Lina, the floor is yours.
Yes. Hi, everybody. Thank you for having me. Before the meeting, I was get emailed, Richard Serrano will be not participate because your organization is not welcome to writing. And I emailed to everybody, Stuart, and I'm thank you for you guys reconsiderate his rights to be here. And this is the one of a major problem when the writing candidate is not involving to any debates. So I wanted to continue propose as a Secretary of Human Rights. I value every human rights in L.A. because we have an issue with human rights. We have like four years ago, we have a pandemic. It's called COVID nineteen. And I was one of them frontline dealing with deadly disease. After COVID, I recognized we have another disease called bureaucracy, negligence, corruption. And a city hall, it's a deal with all those problems. That's why even Imelda Padilla elected, I vote for her last time. But when I see it's not aggressively, it's not doing what we need. That's why I'm running again to bring the attention and fix the problem because it looks like it doesn't go right direction. Also, I want I want to inform you, I'm a first person who running two offices, State Assembly forty-three and District Six. I wanted to ask, tell you why. When we're dealing the crisis, and we have several crises, homelessness, mental illnesses, bureaucracy, all those stuff, crime. It's not safe anymore in the street. So what I look in the people complaining about the law. So that's why the post, we usually, as a human rights organization, I use the artificial intelligence. And I asked the question, how we can fix it? So the answer is simple. We need to fix the state level and the law and change a crime policy, all those bills, which is not helping residents and also implement those new rules and law in a city level. That's the best way to if fix the problems. So it's not only now councilwoman getting two hundred thirty thousand salary versus the people they don't able to pay the rent. So who approved those salaries? Why does the budget LA City has thirteen billion? Ninety percent all goes to the salary and ten percent goes to the expenses. So that's nonsense what we dealing. That's why we in a crisis. We need to increase the neighbor council power versus district power because district already show it's not able to fix the problems. We have a seventy-five people neighbor council. Will we do better job if we give them money from district? And it'll be much better to control. I wanted to change a system, not to change a person because we change Imelda. It's nothing changed because I know she's trying, but the system is broken. And that's why it's not able to fix the problem. So we need to, I'm proposing to structure, change a city hall. That's why we have fifteen council members, seven already has a criminal history. Last week, one of them go to the jail. So the problem is high salary, problem is corruption. Problem is why council members has to be deal with business people with closing doors. And we don't know what kind of deal it's going to. So we need the transparency city hall completely. We need the city hall will be open to the public and residents need to be decided what they need. They need the salary them, or they need the streetlights, or they need to clean the street. And homelessness issue, it's a making business. Now, we have, I'm helping homeless people in separate with them Venice. Nobody take care of them because it's business. They don't care about the city. What we have right now is disaster. They don't care, even oral communication, they giving one minute, and the people when speak in a city hall, they didn't even listen. What kind of democracy we have? I'm I'm here to change that, and I wanted to everybody understand. We maybe you Democrat or Republican, it doesn't matter anymore. We all American have a deserve safe and better life in L.A. That's why I'm running for to do two job same time to fix the law and implement the law in in L.A. City. More detail, you guys can do my website, mydistrictsix.com. I'm getting to, I'm not the politician, but the reason I'm running because we sick of tired to see how dealing government bureaucracy. They even they don't know they cleaning one street, the next week.
It's been more than, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's just been, it's been more than two minutes. So you all have more opportunities to speak, but thank you for your remarks. Mr. Serrano, you have two minutes.
Thank you, David. My name is Richard Serrano. I just put my paperwork in for retirement from the Department of Water and Power, Los Angeles. I invested all my life serving this community on and off the clock. So when I say I invested my life, I mean, since I was thirteen years old as a junior lifeguard at Rexon Parks, sanitation worker picking up the trash, street services, picking up those trees during the storms. I've seen it come and go. Wouldn't be here without Carmelina, and you get two for one. If she wins, I'll be hit there to back her one hundred percent. And if I win, she's definitely gonna be, she's a doctor. Can't get better than dealing with mental health with an actual doctor that does it. But I understand who I'm representing. I know my target audience. And again, Southland Corp, Home Depot, everyone investing their monies into our community. Yeah, I get it. I got the general store in Venice about to be taken out by putting a soft rail down the middle of Venice Boulevard. You guys invest your time, your income is on that platform. If you have no customers coming in because we're ordering everything online, who's your consumer? That part of it is everything. Knowing your target audience, I have forty years invested sanitation worker, street services, and at Water and Power. I was there listening in to when my father took me around, Tom Bradley taking us to the solar panels. It's not latest and greatest. That's nineteen seventy-nine. We're just coming up to speed. Computers came my age, the Gulf War, cell phones. Everything came my age, my era. I'm fifty-five, just got a chance to retire early because I invested my time learning about the city. Now, if I don't know that, then I should got no reason to be here asking for your support. I can't do it alone. Why I'm retiring early is because I got hurt at work. Backwood dropped material on my head. Now I can give forty years to you, knowing my area that I grew up in the valley since seventy-one. Through all those different things, you couldn't have a better leader without Carmelina as a support group. So again, we can take that consideration that I've worked retail. I've done everything from being in a trench.
Okay, thank you, Richard. We just, we really need to stick on our time schedule for today. Okay? Thank you for your remarks as well. We are going to have a series of questions again that I've prepared. But if members of the audience have questions, please put them into the chat. And we will be sure to get to as many of those as possible. So we will be rotating the questions to make sure that the order changes up, rotating the order of the questions answered. So we will be making that fair. The first question is homelessness is a big issue in this city and certainly in Council District Six. There are several elected officials and candidates in this election cycle who oppose banning encampments from in front of schools, daycare facilities, and other sensitive sites. What is your position on this? Mr. Serrano, you have two minutes.
Forty-one eighteen is a perfect start to the problems. Our constitution was based on that. It was opened in it, knowing that this country was going to change. So our rules need to change. I'm tired of hearing, I have family in the blue, serving LAPD. But they're restricted to what they can and cannot do. I got people in street services where I came from. They cannot pick up trash, abandoned shopping carts because it's personal property. Now, we need to change the rules as the country has changed. With that being said, there's gotta be that. I can implement a working sanitation around the clock. Get the personnel. We got two hundred eighty-three million dollar before the city council gives it up. We can get them to work, same equipment, so we can work around the clock until we clean it up. We got the Olympics coming in. But if you don't have the people mandated, we're still down thirty percent of our staffing since the pandemic. So sanitation, street services, you want them to change something, but yet you don't have a game plan. There's no reason for you to own a restaurant if you can't cook. Just to put your name on the board makes no sense. I've done the work. I picked up those trees during the storm. I'm second generation as a civil servant. My sister's at the federal level appellate court. I'm good. I'm ready to lead. I'm not a politician. That wasn't my game plan. I've been working since I was thirteen, when my father passed away when I was twelve. So I give you guys everything I got purity. I got nothing. Again, I am favored by God. That means God first, the Ten Commandments, and love thy neighbor.
Thank you, Mr. Serrano. Carmen Lina Minasova, please answer the question regarding homelessness.
As a helping homelessness over ten years, and it's not only in District Six. My duty as the Secretary of Human Rights, we oversees also Alameda Street. It's close to the South Gate. But I wanted to say same thing. The homeless crisis, it's not properly addressed. And they don't, the city doesn't have a clue. Even Imelda trying the best to do clean. But they're moving from one street from Venice and their homeless is going to another street, which is most close to residential. So moving homelessness around, it's not the solution, especially we don't have a centralized homeless system. We don't have a county, city, and a state work together. They all bureaucracy. Like, look, we have a two billion dollar mayor sent to the homeless crisis. Where's this money go? Where where they spending? How many people housing? Maybe thousand, two thousand? So most the money, basically, LA LASSA organization need to responsible because they're getting funds. And they're giving the NGO organization like LA Family Housing. Who they are, why they money goes to LA Housing versus give them help the neighbor council? Because each neighbor council has a more stuff, we need to just fix it. So I'm proposing different way to work with homeless crisis. First, we need that each city has a European-style homeless center. That's will be the people will be asked, what is European style? The problem is in Europe. Yeah, we have a centralized system for homelessness under Red Cross and National Guard. So each city has its own place. That's why we need to centralized homeless system. That's why we need to also drug addiction and mental illness inside homeless center, give them medication and do detox. You cannot tell the person who using drugs, don't use it and come to shelter. That's why it doesn't work. We need to give them their work job too. So it's different approach for homeless.
Okay, thank you, Carmen Lina. That's time. Councilmember Padilla, how would you address the homelessness issue in Council District?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm, I gotta.
We will not dock your two minutes until you get unmuted.
Perfect. Thank you so much. You know, right now, the conversation related to homelessness is what dominates this entire city. We do have a lawsuit that we have to comply with as it pertains to the the encampments that are found throughout all over Los Angeles. And every time that I need to have a conversation related to this, I try to incorporate what is the most important for Council District Six. In Council District Six, we are not a district where the community is. You know, they recognize their cognizant of the fact that there is some places in the district where building units and building the density can happen. We have density and we have units coming to Panorama City. We have some coming to Sun Valley. We have smaller numbers coming in Lake Pablo. But in order to fully address this, we need to not only build the units, we have to case manage these individuals into the housing, and then we have to case manage them into something that's related to their health and their long-term sustainability. And when I think about those components, which are so much harder, I made sure that in these first immediate months of coming into the office, I have built out a homeless and housing team that is slowly but surely helping me address things on the cleanup side as it pertains to the encampments in the district while simultaneously because of their backgrounds with the institutions on the service provider side as well as the government agencies like LASS aside, I'm slowly but surely figuring out how to unpackage where the gaps are in how taxpayer dollars are being utilized to address the homeless crisis. Because it really is a matter of multiple resources and constituents asking what is happening. So my goal is that as a team, we're going to figure out how to hold service providers accountable while simultaneously having those difficult conversations of building the units. So we can match folks into the housing while continuing to find resources for things like the cleanups. Because at the end of the day, I think that's what a lot of members in CD six want to see is the quality of life issues be cleaned up that come with having this crisis in in our city.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our next question is, and we will be rotating among the candidates. What will you do to create jobs and help businesses in the San Fernando Valley? So that question will go first to Carmen Lina. Carmen Lina, you have two minutes.
Yes, thank you. The business issue, it's taxes is too high in California and it's in L.A. We definitely need to help to decrease the taxes because you look at Singapore, Taiwan, other countries, when it's have a issue, even Dubai. Dubai is the, they don't have even taxes. So if we're going to proportional decrease taxes, will we have more money to the people to create the job? And will be less paid those tax bureaucrats because politician is abusing taxpayer money. Look the city hall. Ninety percent thirteen billion is go salary. What they do? Nothing. They only see it on their leg and just using their money funds and whatever the corruption going out. So we need to definitely reduce taxes at the state level and at a Los Angeles level as well. Number two, we need to create in District Six, all businesses who register in District Six need to have a centralized computerized system. When the residents will be know those businesses, we need to give them businesses opportunity work. Like, for example, if you need to sign, or you need to plumber, or you need to garden, residents can login in District Six website and look the review and look the recommendation. We need to protect people from those businesses who do negligent. So all we need to organize, but priority, we need to reduce taxes. We need to help the mom and dad vendors in the street. City need to provide better umbrella, look like, decrease their taxes, help them, even to help to collect leftover food from those organization, give the homeless. So the business will, if we decrease taxes, the business will be rise. And less bureaucracy, less of the complicated application and all the building and safety property with the building houses. So reduce taxes. That's my priority.
Thank you, Carmen Lina. Councilmember Padilla, what would you do to create jobs in the San Fernando Valley?
I'm unmeeting you.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's a great question. You know, I've been very vocal from the very beginning of the journey of becoming Councilmember that this is a district with a lot of potential. And that still stands in months coming into the into the position. There is a lot of decisions that are going to have to be made for the future of Council District Six for a lot of land use opportunities from four big lots in Venice that are currently owned by the city to four private lots in Sun Valley owned by the company Vulcan as well as things related to the airport. So what I look forward to doing is continuing to have productive conversations with the community about what sort of job opportunities and job creation opportunities they want to see in these places where the potential lies. And as I've mentioned in a lot of other spaces, I wanted to hire somebody that can be fully working on, you know, developing community around the development of Venice Boulevard. That individual has been hired, and I appreciate my, my Carmelina bringing up taxes. We are going to very soon be putting together a motion related to helping legal cannabis shops better understand how to calculate their taxes. Being able to do this, we're gonna be able to close down the illegal shops. So slowly but sure ourselves in different components of what the future is of bringing more jobs and business opportunity to District Six through land use.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mr. Serrano, what will you do to create jobs and help businesses in the San Fernando Valley?
Excuse me for being this little nerdy and again, where we started, this country started with having the Tea Party because we were being taxed. And we went from ten percent income tax to fifty percent income tax in this country. How we got there? Who knows? But we're there. Now, if you got a tax shelter, tax credit for the corporations that are investing in our communities, that'd be beautiful because the future is the children. The same way I started as a student worker, I want to give it to the future. I want these kids to be able to work now that we know we can work remotely like from home, the same way we're having this meeting now. Why can't they not find a way to get an education, make some income, and take some of that weight off the parents? But at the same time, since you corporations have money to invest in our community, you should have the same shelters to be able to give us that. It starts at the beginning, but again, you've got to understand who we're protecting. I think if they're students, we should be able to do them tax exempt and give you guys the credits to give them health benefits and anything they do and maybe a job once they're done because you're investing in them. So let's look towards a future, not the past, and get something going that's going to help both the commerce in our community and the people that are gonna be there. I can only give you one or two terms. I just retired. The next person to give you that same pure heartedness, it takes away the politics of it. And you can at least trust, put the faith and hope back into city council because I'm not a politician.
Thank you, Richard. We are going to have a question submitted by a member of our audience. And the question is, just had it. The Los Angeles City Council recently took action to lift restrictions on street vendor zones. So tell me how this is going to impact, and tell the audience too, how this will impact Council District Six. And what is your position on this issue? Let's start with Councilmember Padilla.
Great question. This is actually part of what my, my team is going to focus on. Recently, the ban now means that original locations that were deemed inappropriate for street vending because of a health or criminal or or safety issue was not properly vested. Is therefore now deemed null. Well, I don't want that to happen in District Six. What I want to see in District Six is I want to see authentic outreach to those regular vendors that are in the same corners all the time and figure out whether they are aware of the new street vending ordinance in the city of Los Angeles that can guide them through figuring out how they can become in compliance to understanding the rules related to working on the street and also figuring out what is the disposal and things that are supposed to follow when they're vending on the street. Because that is already in place at the city of Los Angeles, but it's getting the vendors in that is the issue. So I want to make sure that we are making sure that that's happening. And I'm also really hopeful that we can get our partners at the county to do their their part to make sure that these vendors are also in line with everything related to food handling and health. You know, health permits. So it's something that's a work in progress. And I do want to get to the place where we have vending zones in District Six as opposed to something that's just scattered. But my goal is to do that through community engagement so that we can figure out where are those places where it wouldn't be healthy to have them, it wouldn't be safe to have them. But what could be a balance with brick and mortars, the community and the demand? Because their markets are not the same as brick and mortars. My understanding is that a lot of them are more towards the night, whereas your brick and mortars in the day, just a lot of conversations to have to find that balance.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. Ms. Minasova. Carmen Lina, are you with us?
Yes, I'm with you. Do you guys see my video? Because I don't see, or you guys see me or not?
I see a square, but no video, but just I think for the interest, in the interest of time and keeping things moving, I would just answer the question.
So, okay, so let me give you some facts. After Imelda elected, I request to meeting with her. And it was takes few months to get the meetings and try all the time. They tried to cancel it. But anyway, we got the meeting together. We got good conversation with her. And because I brought my plan and ideas, because again, I'm not the politician, I'm trying to fill the problem, fix the problem. So the street vendors issue is if you guys live in France or Dubai or any European country, local government provide them actually umbrellas and services to them to help them to even collect the leftover food to give them donation to the churches and homelessness. So I proposed those ideas to bring, and she tried to tell me she will be work, but I don't see any problem, any progress. So what the vendors in the street? First, as a medical profession, we need to must to say help them to make sure the food is quality, make sure they safe. The police need to be also the monitor because we already know that the people attacking even street vendor. So the local District Six, if we're going in District Six, has to be mandatory help them because those small businesses, the major helping to community because they paying rents and they're not getting any support from government. So District Six administration with neighbor councils need to be addressed and help them to have a better look, to have a healthy food. In info. So basically, in other words, government, local, or state. So basically, in other words, government, local or state has to be protect those people who doing work and uh that in the street and they need to protect it. So and also help them to organize because some of them, they don't even speak English. So local government need to stand for those mom and dad businesses in the street.
Thank you, Carmen Lina. Uh, Richard?
Uh, yeah, the diversity of our community. Most of us, even at the city council chamber, Paul Kocorian, most of the city council chamber people here can attest that their grandparents or grand uh great grandparents started off as vendors. This is the backbone of our nation. We don't want anything for free, we just wanna work and given getting that opportunity too. And these uh food vendors, no different. There's certain things that we do have to give them to keep them in compliance, maybe plastic bags. When I worked at Street Services, the court would send me street service uh people that had to do hours, community service hours. And I didn't ask them their mental health, I just asked them how many hours they had to do and if they were physically able to do the work. So what's the difference now if I get some of these people to come out, help, maybe get a Visa card as our city council is giving, to get them to come out and clean up the area with us? I'm I'm okay, I'm I'm willing to work with the community, I'm not gonna do it alone. But I got, I need to know that I have a game plan for this. So the food vendors, yeah, again, most of us have somebody that we can tie into. They were gardeners or like, you know, I sold lemonade, something, tomatoes a dime when we were growing up. With all that being said, we can't take this, they want the same future, they're not trying to steal from you. They're just trying to provide.
Thirty seconds.
Looking for their families. We just gotta figure out the happy medium for both of them. And again, you guys have our best at interest in corporations. I need to work with you to make that feasible and possible.
Thank you, Richard. We will be moving on to another question. Um, coupled with homelessness, many of our members believe that housing is a big concern. I'm certainly one of those members. How would you address the city's housing crisis? So the first participant I'd like to address that question is Carmen Lina. Carmen Lina, you have two minutes.
Yes, hi. Um, all right, so we go back to history and also to see other country, how do this? So the whole idea, we need the centralized system, the problems what we have, any aspect, computerized and use artificial intelligence. So now look the housing, what we have right now. The housing developers, the very powerful lobbies, they're meeting with council member with closing doors and making deals. And then after that, we uh we see the developing District Six expensive housing and even the rent start twenty-five hundred, we don't need that. The majority issue what we need, we need to multiply floor because we have a one-floor or two-floor housing, that's not enough to cover our entire LA. So we now, we need to more multiply for at least five floor with two parking stores so people can have a parking, which is big issue. So that it more important, we need to switch how we think because this crisis, we need to change our thinking process. So what I'm proposing for the housing problem is this. The city of Panorama City in the Venice and District, we have a lot of construction agency and people. I wanna invite all the construction, local people under city uh supervision and build up houses, not the super powerful developers who only care about their houses. What really happened, the crime, and when it's a rich companies developed their expensive houses, they don't care about the rent too lower. They wanted to develop the business, the houses, and then get equity and get the loan and do another stuff. So this is the way how they do it. We don't need that, we need the local construction people start building up the houses, multi-floor with parking. And thus will be change the direction and will be have more places to stay and leave.
Thank you. Uh, Richard?
Well, the housing industry, I have a strong issue with everyone using the umbrella term to get elected, affordable housing. Give me a number, give me a figure, you guys are businessmen, you ladies. So you're business people, you would not move on anything without something on paper. What is affordable? Is this the sustainable to the community or are we starting gentification? There was a gentleman at the city council meeting in North Hollywood putting in a storage area and he does multiple ones, he's gonna have one in Arlita or Pacoima and that region. But he gave me a solid figure. His counterpart was uh saying it wasn't gonna be affordable and then he locked in and said, no, it'll be seventeen hundred dollars. Now that's affordable, not thirty-two hundred dollars. So he's locked into a number for his six rentals that he's gonna put in the community. But if we keep using the umbrella terms, I do construction. We can't use union workers all the time to make a sustainable home in our area. That'd be an eight hundred thou- eight hundred thousand dollar home in an area that income is seventy-six thousand jointly. So with that being said, how can you make it affordable without knowing the price? Give me a figure, you don't walk into a restaurant unless it's a celebration and not look at the prices or the menus. If you can, then that's what you do. But when you're working with the community, give me a number. That way we don't have backdoor lobbyists getting these people what they want in return to get elected. If you're gonna have to go ahead and use unions, let it be contracted work from the government. Cuz yeah, that's sustainable, you know, again.
Thirty seconds.
Per diem, that's fine, I'm okay with that. I've been a union member all my life, but I can't have a union come and do the work at my house. Because that would take everything away from me being able to sustain my house.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Councilmember Padilla, how would you address the housing crisis?
Well, I just wanna point out because I don't, it's kind of been uh implied and I just kind of wanna clarify that I am somebody who does not do backdoor deals, especially as it pertains to housing. Um, I have conversations related to housing, I have conversations related to land use. And then I make my decisions um through transparent measures. Um, you know, proper documentation and then I make decisions based on principle. So I am a um very open to creating the housing. I'm putting the density where it's most appropriate. As I mentioned, there's a lot of opportunities in the Sixth District in places like the um LA DOT lots of Van Nuys, uh the Vulcan Pits of Sun Valley, um where we're gonna potentially be talking about housing and the future of housing. Um, I am someone who believes that we need to uh be methodical in our conversation of the uh parking units that are attached to housing. I don't also want to build for the sake of building and bring in ugly design to the district. I do think design should incorporate um things related to uh, you know, facilities that have uh shared community rooms and green space amenities and places for children to play. Uh, I don't want to just build design and build density to build the density. We have to remember that these are community members and these are uh going to be our neighbors as we build. So um and I think it would also be very inaccurate to say that I am one of the uh uh council members on this uh, you know, current uh current class that doesn't engage with the neighborhood councils. We just brought back uh Van Nuys, uh, you know, we, the council meetings back to Van Nuys and we had a presentation where we invited all of the presidents from all of the neighborhood councils, something that was unprecedented. Um, and to also say that I haven't been um aggressive or intergovernmental in my approach of trying to address things in the district would also be inaccurate. I talked to my state leaders, federal leaders and we know that in order to build the appropriate amount of housing and affordable housing, which is not cheap to build, we're gonna have to work together and we're gonna make it happen and we're gonna address it in this um generation.
Thank you, council member. Um, just in the interest of time, um I know that we have many uh audience questions that were submitted, but we will not be able to get to all of them. So uh our apologies, but I will take one more question from the audience that I have uh that was sent to me through the chat. And after that, we will have closing statements. So let me look at that question from the audience and it's related to housing, um which is one of VICA's priority issues. Many mom and pop landlords who provide housing have been devastated from the pandemic restrictions that was instituted by the Los Angeles City Council. Uh, what are your, what is your attitude towards property owners and housing providers? I think with the, I mean, the point being the the people who build housing and maintain housing are sometimes demonized and yet uh they are the ones who create the housing units for people to live in. So to answer that question first, uh let's hear from Carmen Lina. Carmen Lina, the floor is yours for two minutes.
Any problem in LA city? If we compare Orange County and even other some, Bernard, LA city is bureaucracy, complication, homeowners, even they don't know they're passing some law. Last uh last time we, I joined a Van Nuys meeting, they passing law to help the homeowner or the people who cannot pay rent. They give only deadline February, like like few days. The 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 system, how they work, I'm not mentioning they melt the corrupt person, no. But she's not aggressive, she's not helping because I vote for her. But I'm saying we need to eliminate any risk of corruption. We need, we see fifteen council members, seven already has a corruption cases. We don't need that those things uh open loop so people can under closing door. We need to eliminate that. So we need to fix bureaucracy. We need the homeowners able to access online, get the permit, any places like three-one-one LA. So that we have to centralized system help them. And anything when a city making, they has to be sent by text or email, we have those options. Again, I'm a new generation with the technology and I know how to fix it. Only the problem is building and safety, the bureaucracy organization, they don't know what they do. The lot of organization, they're not helping, they're asking the, you need to hire somebody constructor who need to pay, so it's a mess.
Thirty seconds.
So if we wanna, we wanted to fix it, we need to demonopolize the system, which is help the homeowner because they pay taxes, not the politician. Who pay taxes, they need to allow to them to easy and get access. We need to increase quality of life in LA, look at the what we have in LA, disaster. Any problem we can resolve if have a good people, but besides good people, we have a good system, not right now, what we have.
Thank you, Carmen Lina. Uh, same question regarding the mom and pop landlords being uh devastated from the pandemic restrictions. This is for Councilmember Padilla. Councilmember Padilla, you have two minutes.
Uh, yes, well, thank you for this uh question. You know, this is what I call the gre- greatest mediation of our time caused by COVID, right? Um, there has always been a conversation between um what is to be required uh from a housing provider um and then balancing out the rights of uh those who are the renters. And I am someone who has the philosophy that I would always prefer to give them direct help versus encouraging litigation. Um, but there has been a lot of things that have changed at city council over the last couple of years as it pertains to um what the uh mediation process is between these two parties. So um I think what we need to do is, as a council office, be prepared to support the mom and pops with how they can um, you know, make sure that they're not missing out on any sort of uh supports that they can apply for and also making sure that they understand their rights uh while simultaneously making sure that they are, they are holding up their uh part of the bargain and making sure that their units are habitable because then when you have a situation where somebody is getting evicted, we need to remember that they also have rights as well. So this is why I say that we have to um stay on top of what the mediations are and making sure that those um mom and pops are not overly stretched too thin because then what you end up having is they get bought out by the uh bigger housing providers and then you have a different um problem on your hands. And then that's when you completely eliminate any kind of leverage from um, you know, those who are renting from a mom and pop unit. It's a whole different ballgame when it's a much larger housing provider.
Thank you, council member. Uh, Richard Serrano, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Um, again, uh when you feel the weight of implementation, uh it becomes the same factor. The idea that you work with Nuri Martinez and this is why we had that special election and your friends and colleagues got you back in the same position to where she was. It's, we gotta remember, this whole thing started with redistricting. So when we say we're for the people, but affecting the people, we're not for the people. If it's in the negative aspect, we're about to put a software down Van Nuys Boulevard with Ann Arlita, which is District Seven and Eight. From the federal level to the state level to the local level, they are not taking care of the constituents. The people that have businesses there, the homes on Van Nuys Boulevard, they've acquired already the Metro One House, working on the second deal, they need eighty homes. So at the end of the everything, once that shovel hits the ground on a full impact, since I did put the Metro in LA when we first started it, I did work on that, so I get to speak on it. They will be taking property away from people under public intimate domain. But they're not caring about that because it'll get them reelected. They got federal money coming in, they're okay with that. What happens to Pacoima, Arlita, the small parts of the district? The rest of it's a great project, but it's not doable for a certain part of our district. And if it's not doable for one part of our district, it shouldn't be doable in our district at all. Because it affects us all. Can't be, oh, I don't care, it doesn't affect me, it just affects you kind of attitude. So when it's implicated, it's because it's well felt. We have this thing because, this election because we were redistricting backdoor deals. So it comes with a territory.
Thank you, Richard. All right, we are moving on to conclude our program with closing statements from each of the candidates. Uh, they will also have two minutes. And again, thank you, members of the audience, for submitting your questions. They covered a whole gamut of different policy issues and apologies due to time constraints. And having three candidates needing to answer two minutes each, we could not get to all of them. So for our first closing statement, uh we would like to hear from Carmen Lina Minasova. Carmen Lina, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you. So the, we're we're talking about city of LA and the city uh structure of the LA city. First, we need to change election law because I'm running, I was running state assembly only require forty signatures, city of LA require five hundred signature, that's already corruption, that's already control. Those Nune Martinez and other people who make that law, they not 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 here and some of them in jail. First, if you wanted to, city with transparency, we need to allow every American citizen eighteen above allowed to be in a ballot, whatever they wants to be and bring the idea. We don't care about five hundred signature, we need to care about idea and the thoughts, how we can fix it, that's number one. Number two, election in in here in Los Angeles is corruption. The uh like Richard Serrano, he will be not attend to his meeting if I don't ask the steward and ask them to please to be. That's a, that's a wrong way. Plus, election and it has to be candidate have a right to speak. And thank you for opportunity you guys give us, but overall, if you have a money, you will be elected, that's wrong. We need to use public funds for all the candidates have opportunity speak and bring the idea. LAPD, LAPD chief need to be elected. Enough enough, we LAPD chief has to be always follow the mayor. LAPD like Sherry, it's elected, like other uh police agency. Police need to be from the people and the police need to do their job because the politician not allowed him to do job. It's nonsense using that uh uh appointed person. Lower taxes, lower taxes, about the red restricting. If you even have a thirty council member, that will be not work. We need to change the structure, give the power to residents by neighbor council people. That's the best way to fix any problem because we have a twenty people each city, they can do better manage than only one council member or two council member or three council man. This system, it's not work, even change or do something. Uh, we need to lower taxes at the state level, no more two hundred forty thousand salary, email there or other people, that's nonsense. That's our money.
We we have to, we have to move on to the other candidates, but thank you for your closing remarks. Uh, Mr. Serrano, you have two minutes.
Uh, thank you again for this opportunity uh to invite me in and try to shine amongst uh in the dark right now. But with that being said, like she said, the city council neighborhoods, they volunteer their time, they do not get paid to meet and deal with the same problems that our city council men make a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred thirty thousand a year. Vice President of the United States makes that kind of money. It makes no sense that we're giving all that money, all. All not to the community. I mean, if you can't make a living at a hundred and forty thousand and you're. In that city council chamber, then you shouldn't be in that city council chamber. Give that hundred thousand dollars back. That's a million and a half dollars. It starts about being logical. I mean, we all have to balance our books at the end. So let's keep it where we're at and start investing in our communities with our future, the kids, the students. If we're gonna think about now, we've already passed now. We gotta look towards the future. How do we plant those seeds? To give those kids a future. We don't look at, we got the walking dead out there. Mental health problems, I I'm not gonna be judgmental on the problems. So like my godson said, it's a spider web. We just don't know how they got in there. Now we gotta be, hopefully, we don't have family members that are going through it. And if you do, the most honest word in that dictionary, not sympathy.
Thirty seconds.
It's empathy. So with that being said, we're all gonna have to deal with it one way or the other. Let's make it a better future by electing somebody that really cares about the community. Not their candidacy, not trying to get to Sacramento, already had a career. Not trying to get to Washington, already had the career and give you that forty years of experience back to the community. God bless you.
Thank you, Richard. Uh, Councilmember Padilla, uh, two minutes for your closing statement.
Thank you so much. So um, I think some of you already know this, but just to, so everybody knows, um, you know, I was born in Van Nuys and raised in Sun Valley. Which is the two sort of extreme uh, regions of. So I have close ties and this uh, to this region and this region means a lot to me. I don't want another generation of um. To go by for this district where we don't tap into its uh, full potential. You know, and I'm somebody um, who being from Sun Valley could uh, in another conversation talk. About how how much I don't like the way a community like Sun Valley was chopped up during redistricting. But we're not here to talk about that. This is the borders and this is what I'm trying to address and this is the region that I'm trying to fix. But you know, the only individuals that played a role in helping me get here include uh, my parents, my siblings, my teachers, my doctors. And the only friends that got me here were really the high school friends and the college friends who were the first to help me fundraise to be competitive. And when I started to show that I was competitive is where I started to get institutional support. I was very much considered quite the underdog when I first uh, started this campaign. Um, but I like to think that I've been able to uh, you know, act on the things that I talked about. Because I was very peculiar about what I chose to focus on. To make sure that it was going to be within parameters of things that I can uh, make. Productive outcomes and reasons to come from. So I thank you for having me. I uh, you know, would love it if you can follow the campaign on email the padia dot com and on the social media. Um, we are fundraising to stay competitive. And we are also hosting volunteer um, bank and uh, pricing walking. So everybody is invited um, uh, on the weekends and thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Padilla. So that's all the time we have for today for the candidates debate. Uh, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank each and every one of the candidates for appearing. So Councilmember Padilla, Carmen Lena Minasova and Richard Serrano. Want to thank you for your honesty and candor. This was very informative. And all of us here in the audience are grateful to be able to get a much clearer picture of where each of you stand on the issues. And we know you have a busy campaign season and we appreciate you taking time out of your schedule to address VICA and its membership. And speaking of VICA, we have a few great events coming up. Our VICA State Office Holders Dinner is on March eighth. And our extraordinary, extraordinary, excuse me, extraordinary women in leadership uh, event is on April twenty sixth. Uh, we hope to see you at one of them. For more information on. Either of those events and all VICA programs and VICA memberships, please visit vica, B I C A dot com.